Welcome to the July 20th, 2023 Palmer City School District Board of Education Meeting. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mrs. Nusio.
Mrs. Roth.
Present.
Mr. Price.
Mr. Ruda.
Present.
Mrs. Short.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Dr. Smiley, can you please confirm this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
We can.
Can you please monitor the livestreaming throughout the meeting? If there is a problem, please speak up immediately so that technical difficulty can be addressed.
We will.
Set information to board, sir.
Sure, just want to give an update to the community and to the board certainly about demolition and abatement. We have begun that process. We began it at Parkview actually Monday, and we anticipate four to six days of work at Parkview. After that, we will move to abatement at Brenwood, then eventually abatement at Palmer Senior High. We anticipate that abatement at Brenwood would be approximately eight to 10 days, and then Palmer Senior High would follow that. We will look to start actual demolition sort of concurrently with, you know, as abatement moves on, then we could begin to demolish. So we could actually see some pretty significant demolition equipment on the side of Parkview within the next week or so. Still don't, we're not providing, you know, clear dates, you know, this is the date that it's going to begin in Palmer because you just never know when you get into this work, how long it might take. So that's where we're at. Parkview is coming along well. The auction of Palmer Senior High has concluded. There are still some items that we have to sort of decide what we, how we want to store them or dispose of them. These are things that were not purchased in the auction. So just tying up some loose ends, but for the most part, that's an empty building. The only other thing I would say, I just want to make sure to clarify, if anyone wants to comment, the forms are in the back. So you have to make sure you fill out a form before you comment.
Thank you. You're welcome. Communications, Mrs. Roth.
Yeah, I've got something really exciting tonight. Next weekend at Valley Forge High School, the Palmer City Schools Foundation is sponsoring The Sound of Music. This is a cross-district representation of talent, all the way from director to every single student. And as you know, there's lots of children in The Sound of Music, but even the adult roles are played by our students. So we're very excited to be able to present that. It's July 28th, 29th, and 30th. The Friday and Saturday presentations will be at 7:00 PM. The Sunday afternoon matinee is at 2:00 PM. And the tickets are available at Valley Forge from 9:00 AM to noon every day until the performances. And then tickets will also be available for, starting an hour before the performances begin on each of those days. Tickets are $15 for adults, $10 for students and seniors. So we're hoping to fill the auditorium and have a great turnout. It's exciting. The producer of the show is Jack Roberts, who is a retired principal from Valley Forge High School and also a longtime theater guy involved with the Palmer Symphony. And to hear him talk about it, this will be a very professional presentation. So we're looking forward to it, and we're hoping that many from the community come to enjoy the performance.
Those dates again, please.
The dates are Friday, July 28th, Saturday, July 29th, and Sunday, July 30th. 7:00 PM Friday, 7:00 PM Saturday, 2:00 PM Sunday.
Oh, there's a hat name.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. And if you want to know how professional this is, you ought to see this program. Holy smokes. Color, shiny pages. It's just really, really nice. And well, it's a professionally done presentation. I mean, it's going to be pretty great. So hope to see you there.
Yeah. Be there one of those days.
All right, sounds good.
Uh, Mr. Nusio, you got anything for us today?
Yeah, I got two things. First, we have a teach, I think she was a employee, a media specialist who worked at Palmer Park from, since 1962 to 1994. She passed away recently and left the district $50,000 in her will.
Wow.
There was nothing, no attachments that could have to be used for this, restrictions or requirements. It'll take six to eight months for us to get that money, but I'm not sure if you guys want to set that money aside for some specific purpose.
What did she, she taught at a media center?
She was a media specialist.
Media specialist.
At Palmer Park. And they had that slurred.
We should recognize her in some way, a badge or something, something along those lines, something permanent.
We'll take care of that.
What is her name again, Mr. Nusio?
Shirley, I'm not sure, I always pronounce her last name, but it's R-E-V-R-O. It's Repro or Rebro. I'm not sure how to pronounce this last name, but she was, she worked for the district from 1962 to 1994. So it's kind of a surprise when we got that in the mail the other day, but $50,000 to us, it was very nice. So you guys can think of what you want to use the money for. We won't get the money for six to eight months. And then we have House Bill 33 that was passed recently. There's some things in there that of course people don't like. The voucher went up from 6,100 to 8,407. That's the choice voucher I was talking about. They're using the fiscal year '22 base cost, which is good for us, and that gets us about $3 million, but our payroll has been up. So you look at your last year's pending payroll and you add in the increases for next year, it kind of like, it's kind of a net even. Payroll's going to go up $3 million, but we're getting $3 million more in funding, so it's a wash. So we're getting money, but it doesn't really change the forecast much. And see, there's transportation. They have a bunch of different things. Like, one of the things I thought was nice was it allows districts to use nine-passenger vans to transport private school and community school students. So if we have to, we don't have to use 72-passenger buses if we have to transport them for some reason. A lot of this stuff will take effect in September because in Ohio, laws don't become effect until 90 days after they're signed, unless they're signed in emergency. So a lot of, we won't see the funding or anything until September.
So we would think that vouchers would not be available until into the school year?
They'll be available, but the amount for, the increase might not be available until September.
Yeah, I mean, the increase in people who are qualified for them.
Right.
Awesome, thank you.
Do you have a question?
Do you have a question for him?
Yes. You know, I noticed in the financials that you sent us, the end-of-the-month financials that you always send to us, and I mean, there are category after category of our costs that have increased in different ways throughout the past year. And I just keep thinking about the challenges to our budget because of those increases. And, you know, the $3 million that we're going to get, that sounds great, but it's not a huge percentage of our budget. And because of the increases, it does eat it up really quickly. So, okay, thanks.
Inflation hurts us too, not just consumers.
Right, right, exactly. And.
Hold on a second. I'm going to lead you into it.
Oh, okay.
So we do have another, rather, a sad announcement about a former, actually Normandy's first principal, Mr. Cobb. And I'm going to let Cindy.
Sure. Mr. Wes Cobb was the first and longest-serving principal at Normandy High School. And I'm pleased to have been one of his students and known him well there. He passed away Saturday at the age of 99. A long, rich, wonderful life. In fact, when we did our, at Normandy, we had a celebrated 50th anniversary of the opening of the school a few years ago, and Mr. Cobb came and spoke. And I was at his house. He was all excited about coming. He was, gave a whole listing of stuff that he was going to do. And so he was a vibrant man up to the end, you know? So we certainly recognize his contribution. And I can speak personally, I won't go into details, but he was a very innovative principal. Tried a lot of things that were new and different in a high school setting, and some of which worked out great, some of which I can't imagine we would do today. But they worked at the time, you know? And everything from, you know, student exchange programs to, you know, different ways of working in the classroom. Really exciting gentleman. And so while we celebrate his life, we certainly also mourn and send our sympathies to the family for their loss.
Thank you. So anyway, I think he was just an educator to educator. He was fabulous. I met him, I had to, fortunate to have met him several times. He's always pretty, he's acted like I knew him for this whole life, or my whole life.
It's kind of.
Yeah, really kind of. So anyway, no, I can move on. All right, so at this point, we openly need to recollect address the board tonight's agenda meetings. Do we have any forms? Do we not? Do we have any amendments? Do we not? All right, so I move to adopt Resolution 2023-07-322, approval of the written record proceeding from June 29th, 2023, regular, and July 13th, 2003, Special Board of Education meetings.
Second.
We have a motion to second to adopt Resolution 2023-07-322. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Roth.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-07-322 has been approved. This brings us to curriculum. Mrs. Roth.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-07-323, approval of overnight out-of-state, out-of-country field trips.
Miss Short.
Second.
We have a motion to second to adopt Resolution 2023-07-23, no, 323. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mrs. Nusio.
Mrs. Roth.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2023-07-2323 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-07-324, authorizing agreement for GoGuardian.
Second.
We have a motion to second to adopt Resolution 2023-07-324. Any questions or comments from the board?
Can I provide a few comments?
Absolutely.
So both this tool and the next tool are tools that we actually began to access during our COVID years. You can see on the resolution that we are still using ESAR funds to pay. We are cognizant of the fact that, you know, ESAR funds will expire after the school year. And so the question's been asked, you know, are we being excessive? Are we becoming too dependent upon ESAR funds? We watched the usage rates of all of our tools. In fact, we've eliminated some tools based on very low usage rates. And the tools that are in front of us tonight, which are GoGuardian and Paradek, are very popular amongst our teaching staff. They have become really routine parts of the toolboxes that they employ to educate our students. And so that's the reason for the resolution. In terms of moving forward, like anything else, I mean, we will always have to prioritize and see what we have money to spend on and what we don't. And so, you know, that's a decision we would make next year. And in all honesty, given the amount of investment that we put into our textbooks and various curricular materials, our curriculum costs should be relatively low in the future, allowing us to use general fund money for things like GoGuardian and Paradek. In general, from comments that I've heard throughout states and throughout different conferences or meetings I've been at, I tend to believe we're ahead of the curve in realizing that ESAR is indeed expiring. We are not looking at some type of ESAR cliff to fall off of. We've collaborated quite a bit with Mr. Nusio to be aware of, you know, the money that we've invested through ESAR and how we're going to sustain that or not when ESAR goes away. So these are both very useful tools. And again, we've budgeted them with ESAR in mind this year, but knowing that moving forward, we have to make some more difficult decisions in terms of our priorities.
Thank you, sir. Any else comment? Mrs. Nusio.
Mrs. Roth.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2023-07-324 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-07-325, authorizing agreement for Paradek.
Second.
We have a motion to second to adopt Resolution 2023-07-325. Any questions or comments from the board? Do you have anything to add on this one?
Same. Do you like me to replay?
No, sir, I'm just clarifying. Mrs. Nusio.
Mrs. Roth.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2023-07-325 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-07-326, granting authority to the administration to enter into a contract with the family during the 2023, 2025, 2023 to 2025 school years.
Second.
We have a motion to second to adopt Resolution 2023-07-326. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mrs. Nusio.
Mrs. Roth.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2023-07-326 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this will conclude curriculum process.
Thank you, Mrs. Roth. Well done. Business, Mr. Ruda.
Yes, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-07-327, approving renewal of beverage contract.
Second.
A motion to second to adopt Resolution 2023-07-327. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mrs. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Roth.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2023-07-327 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-07-328, approving agreement with BSN for athletics.
Second.
We have a motion to second to adopt Resolution 2023-07-328. Any questions or comments from the board? I do. Is this like for Spiritware?
It is, yeah. This has been a company we've worked with for a number of years. They open up shops and so we'll send out to the staff, hey, Valley Forge Spiritware is available.
It's all online, right?
Is that it?
It's all online.
Yes. It's been pretty successful, pretty popular, very easy, very strong service for us.
Thank you. Mrs. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Roth.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2023-07-328 has been approved.
Okay, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-07-329, approving purchase of camera servers for safety and security.
Second.
We have a motion to second to adopt Resolution 2023-07-329. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mrs. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Roth.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2023-07-329 has been approved.
Okay, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-07-330, resolution authorizing certain employees to possess firearms on school property and in designated school safety zones pursuant to Ohio House Bill 99.
Second.
We have a motion to second to adopt Resolution 2023-07-330. Any questions or comments from the board?
Can I make a few comments?
Have a comment, but go ahead.
Obviously, a pretty heavy resolution here. This is something we actually discussed a year ago at this time. We had the folks from the Palmer Armory come in. We've worked with our police departments extensively and feel that it is a very important measure to take to arm employees who desire to be armed. We aren't going to name them. We don't have to name them, and that's actually part of the, part of the purpose of going through and having the wording of the resolution as it is. We don't want people to know who's carrying that, that would sort of defeat the purpose. So we will work very closely with the Palmer Police Department and follow their regulations. We have already started that collaboration. So it's important to note that our law enforcement partners have been very integral in this process. We work very closely with all three police departments, and we will do so throughout this process as well. The Ohio Revised Code allows us to take this step, unfortunately, in the year 2023. We think that steps that we can take that are economically efficient, as well as, you know, make our campuses harder, so to speak, I think we have to take advantage of those resources. We will not force anyone to carry a firearm. That's very important. We know that various unions have come out in strong language against the arming of various union members. And so this is not anything where someone who doesn't want to be armed all of a sudden has to make that decision or lose their job. That is not the goal. The goal is simply to take people who are qualified, who can make safe decisions, who have, you know, passed various licensers and certifications, and allow them to be one more tool in keeping our students safe.
Okay. Uh, Mrs. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Roth.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2023-07-330 has been approved.
Okay, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-07-331, authorizing COMDOC to relocate COMDOC print shop equipment.
Second.
We have a motion to second to adopt Resolution 2023-07-331. Any questions or comments from the board?
I think perhaps, Dr. Smiley, would you just address the need for having some outside source having to do this so that people understand?
We just want to make sure we don't screw it up.
Well, I wasn't thinking exactly that way. That's just a, yeah.
I want to break the equipment.
These are highly, highly technical machines that have been installed by, you know, certified members of those organizations. And we feel like those certified members of those same organizations should be the ones to relocate. We certainly don't want to make a mistake that would be very costly in the long run.
And then they have the responsibility if something goes wrong in the transfer, it's their, okay, thank you.
If our guys moved it and it's damaged, COMDOC will not fix it.
And I'm assuming that for the next one, for the Xerox, it'll be the same thing. Okay, so roll call, please, Mrs. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Roth.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, a Resolution 2023-07-331 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-07-332, authorizing Xerox to relocate Xerox print shop equipment.
Second.
We have a motion to second to adopt Resolution 2023-07-332. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mrs. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Roth.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2023-07-332 has been approved.
Okay, unless another board member has anything to discuss, this will conclude business.
Thank you, Mr. Ruda.
Well done.
Well done. Mr. Business, Mrs. Roth.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-07-333, a resolution determining to proceed with the submission to the electors of the school district, the single question of the renewal of all of two existing tax levies pursuant to sections 5705.194 to 5705.197 of the Ohio Revised Code.
Oh, second.
Thank you. We have a motion to second to adopt Resolution 2023-07-333. Any questions or comments from the board?
I'll kind of inspect it.
All right.
This is combining two renewal levies, one expires in '24 and one expires in '27, and it'd be a 10-year levy expiring in 2034. It's no new money. It's just existing money we need to operate the school district. And we're just combining it so voters don't get levy fatigue, they don't ballot all the time. And it saves our costs. Every time we put up a levy, it costs the district money to do so. So if you only have one instead of two, it's costing the district less money.
We can see the link.
Can I make a comment too? The notion of, you know, the emergency levy piece, because I think people could look back and say, well, this was an emergency 10 or 20 or 30 years ago. And quite frankly, at the time, it was, but then that becomes built into your general fund. And so this isn't additional money. This wasn't spent to quell some emergency 20 years ago, and now we don't need it. This becomes part of your revenue stream, and that's same revenue stream as what we predict running out in 2027. So to say that we could all of a sudden do without this 5.9 mils, which quite frankly, I was surprised to see it was that low. Happy to see it was at 5.9. To say that we could, you know, all of a sudden do without, that's a significant chunk. What's the actual dollar figure? Do you remember?
It's around 15.5 million.
Yeah, so we can't eliminate 15.5 million dollars from our budget because someone thought, you know, well, this is an old emergency. It is a consistent stream of revenue, and obviously, we, all of the resolutions you see are about us being fiscally responsible to maintain that operating fund as long as we can.
For some reason, Ohio, Ohio calls fixed-sum levies emergency levies for school districts.
Right. And that's always written that way, right? When it comes back, if we redo. There's an emergency on it.
It's just a fixed sum amount, 15.5 million, that's what we're getting, but they call it emergency.
And if, if some, like, if we had had anything passed from, like, what was it, 2011, the last new money that came into the district? So if something had been passed between 2011 and now, then potentially we wouldn't need one of these or?
Correct.
Okay. So I just, I was curious about that because, all right.
Well, can I just make a comment about that? We wouldn't ask for money. We would depend on these renewals. We wouldn't ask for new money if the renewals would cover it, correct? Or not? No, you're, what I mean by that is we, not just we, but all districts that have these emergency levies, as they become part of your revenue, we become dependent upon those. So we expect to pass them, and fortunately, the community has been very receptive to that. We've fortunately been able to pass our renewals. But we wouldn't ask for new money if the renewals didn't cover it already. You know, I mean, things that, the funding that the renewals cover is built in.
Yes.
Yeah, we have. So we only ask for new money when we no longer can sustain our budget based on the revenue that we've been getting.
Right, we've gone 12 years without new tax levy.
And have our costs increased?
Absolutely.
Just checking.
All right, is that it, everybody? Roll call, Mrs. Nusio.
Mrs. Roth.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2023-07-333 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-07-334, approval of the June 2023 financial report.
Second.
We have a motion to second to adopt Resolution 2023-07-334. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, Mrs. Nusio.
Mrs. Roth.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2023-07-334 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-07-335, ratification of investments.
Second.
We have a second, a motion to second to adopt Resolution 2023-07-335. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mrs. Nusio.
Mrs. Roth.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2023-07-335 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-07-336, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
We have a motion to second to adopt Resolution 2023-07-336. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mrs. Nusio.
Mrs. Roth.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2023-07-336 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss regarding finance, this will conclude for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Roth. Trade right back at you, though, Mrs. Roth, with legislation.
I have nothing for legislation this evening. Mr. Nusio agreed to speak about House Bill 33, and so that's been taken care of.
Oh, we did that.
Yep.
All right, brings us to Human Resources, Mr. Short.
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-07-337, approval of the.
Approval of the following certificated exhibits. Confirmation of certificated appointments. Confirmation of certificated replacements. Confirmation of stipend amounts. Confirmation of supplemental contracts. Confirmation of supplemental appointments. Confirmation of certificated non-compensated leaves of absence. Confirmation of change in certificated assignments for the two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four school year. Confirmation of summer school administration contracts. Acceptance of certificated resignations and acceptance of certificated administrative resignations.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero seven dash three three seven. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero seven dash three three seven has been approved.
Move to adopt resolution two zero two three dash zero seven dash three three eight. Confirmation of certificated administrative appointments slash replacements.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero seven dash three three eight. Any questions or comments from the board?
Did you want either comment on their bios at this point?
Well, maybe do it after we go. I think that might be better. Roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero seven dash three three eight has been approved. We have the floor, Mr. Dr. Smiley.
Well, thank you. Welcome to our administrative team. We're thrilled to, um, welcome both of you this evening. Uh, we'll start with Jeanette. Jeanette Cora comes to us from Elyria City School District, where she was an elementary and middle school teacher since two thousand four. Jeanette obtained her bachelor's degree from Ashland University in early childhood education in two thousand three. Her master's degree in curriculum and teaching from Bowling Green State University in two thousand seven. Her early childhood generalist from Ohio State University in two thousand nine. And finally, her inspired leadership principal licensure program licensure from Cleveland State University in two thousand twenty-two. Making her a trifecta of state schools in Ohio. Jeanette is an experienced teacher with a passion for education and a proven track record of success in multiple leadership roles. She's served on such committees in roles such as the OTEZ Coordinator-Evaluator, CPI Team Member, Curriculum Developer, RESA Year One Mentor, and a Teacher Union Officer for Elyria Education Association. Jeanette will be utilizing her skills as the next dean of students at Ridgebrook Elementary School. Can we give her a round of applause? Will stage a couple of words.
I'm just very excited to join this team. Wendy and Andrea, they're fabulous and kind and welcoming, so I'm very excited to.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And then we have Anthony, uh, Police. It's actually pronounced like police. Uh, will be serving at Shiloh Middle School as the dean of students for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. Anthony comes to us from field local schools where he taught third grade and most recently fifth grade. Anthony also taught in Fairfax County Public Schools and King George County Schools in Virginia from two thousand ten till two thousand seventeen. He obtained his bachelor's degree from Marietta College in two thousand ten. His master's degree in educational leadership from the American College of Education in two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Police has gained valuable leadership experience in fulfilling multiple leadership roles such as building leadership team, PBIS team, and completing administrative internship. And for the looks of his sleeves, can do approximately five hundred pushups in a day. Welcome, Anthony. Didn't mean to undersell you, sir.
I'm sitting here thinking nobody's going to mess with this guy.
I hope not. Uh, just thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm, I'm excited to learn and grow and, uh, really expand my knowledge here, so thank you for the opportunity.
It's welcome.
We don't get very many Marietta graduates up this far.
Yeah. I also want to say.
I graduated from Temple. I went two years. I graduated from Temple.
That's why I started my teaching career was in Marietta.
Awesome. I'd like to, look, point out too, we've hired a good number of new deans from, from different districts, which is really exciting. I, I, I want to make sure I note though that all twelve principals are, are returning from principal positions from last year. The only one that's actually in a different position is Wendy Jewell, who was at Palmer Park and now will now be at Ridgebrook. So it's always great to get, you know, new energy and new ideas and new enthusiasm into the organization at sort of that, that lower level of administration. But it's also great to have the continuity that we have within our principal ranks. So we're excited for an administrative year next year and administrative cohort that should be very dynamic.
Excellent. Excellent. Welcome.
You're welcome. So, uh, can I, if it wasn't five hundred, how many is it? I didn't want to. Five hundred twenty. Five hundred one.
I move to adopt resolution two zero two three dash zero seven dash three three nine. Approval of the following classified exhibits. Confirmation of classified appointments and replacements. Confirmation of change of classified assignments. Confirmation of classified resignations and approval of classified stipend. Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero seven dash three three nine. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero seven dash three three nine has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution two zero two three dash zero seven dash three four zero. Acceptance of classified retirements.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero seven dash three four zero. Any questions or comments from the board? My comment is we're losing two bus drivers. Do we have enough?
We have a good number in, in, in training. That job fair was actually very successful.
Very good.
We had more than, more than two dozen applicants for various positions. Maintenance, uh, workers we've added to our cohort, which is great as well. So, yeah, we're, we're, we are done raving, waving the, the red flag, so to speak. But, yeah, we always do need to watch because obviously with the expansion of busing into the high school, can't afford to lose many.
All right, thank you. Roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero seven dash three four zero has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes human resources.
Thank you, Mrs. Short. A little dumb, but unfortunately we'll go right back to you for policy.
All righty. Uh, I move to adopt resolution two zero two three dash zero seven dash three four one. Approval of the following revised policies. Policy zero one three one point one, technical corrections. Policy five six one zero, removal, suspension, expulsion, and permanent, permanent exclusion of students. Policy seven five four zero, technology. And policy seven five four zero point zero one, technology privacy.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero seven dash three four one. Any questions or comments from the board? These are all the changes. They're everything.
Yeah, there's nothing, nothing.
It all makes us work.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. The roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero seven dash three four one has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes policies.
Thank you, Mrs. Short. Very good. Uh, let's see, any information from the rest of our board members? At this point, we open the meeting to public, uh, to, to the public to address the board with comments and or concerns. Do we have any such requests? No. So there are no requests, so let's skip on the next. So I move the adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero seven dash three four two. Adjourn, oh, they don't. Sorry, that's executive. Sorry, my bad. Let's get that whole page. How about this one? I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero seven dash three four three. Adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero seven dash three four three. Roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you all for coming.